We all need to order to stand for the pledge allegiance and consent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Called order, roll call starting on my right.
Councilperson Josh Hearn.
Councilperson Brad Byer.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Councilperson Craig Anderson.
Councilperson Jeremiah Olten.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda? Any additions from staff?
Should be good, but as is.
Anything here at the table? Move to approve. We have a motion to approve. We have a second. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next item is approval of council meeting minutes of July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion. Any discussion or questions?
I'll second.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That also carries. It'll take us into finance and budget. Takes us to accounts payable. If you have any questions on that, direct them to Finance Director Carla.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That'll take us into motions and general business. First item of my motions and general business tonight will be a public hearing with High Forest Township. In two thousand and one, the city of Sterfield and High Forest Township entered into a joint orderly annexation agreement. The original agreement was set to expire after five years, subject to an automatic extension for an additional five years upon written notice by either party. To date, we have extended the agreement five times, and it has worked very well for both parties. This past year, while working with the Office of Administrative Hearings and annexing County Road Thirty-five, it was discovered there were discrepancies between the annexation map and the annexation parcel descriptions that had been caught that hasn't been caught all these years. Staff has met with High Forest Township, the board members, and have agreed, and all have agreed, to rewrite the agreement to reflect the correct descriptions, along with extending the annexation boundary area. So, we're gonna have a public hearing tonight to entertain questions or concerns from city or township residents. So, I'm gonna close the regular meeting. I'm gonna open a public hearing. We have a joint public hearing meeting between the city of Sterfield and High Forest Township. Notice is hereby given that Sterfield City Council and the High Forest Township Board will hold a public hearing in regards to the orderly annexation agreement filed at City Hall. The meeting will be held at City Hall, one oh five East First Street, on Monday, August eighth, at seven P.M. We will listen to all written or oral statements. Do you have any written statements?
We do not.
Did you folks have any written statements from any of your residents? Any oral statements?
No.
From any of you, oral statements? Any oral statements from us?
No.
Anybody here at the table? Any questions from you folks? Now's the time. This is the hearing order. What do you got? We don't have to make a decision tonight on this. We're gonna have you take it back to your board to make sure it's all in agreement with everybody, but we wanna get concerns or questions from you so we can work through them too, if you have any.
The only question I have is if it would, doing this is gonna affect any of my property of the mining out there?
I don't believe it will, no.
No.
Because you're still in the township unless you want, unless you want.
Unless I come to the city.
Yep.
Okay.
Wayne, you had something?
Yeah, this, uh, uh, originally it was gonna go up Fifteenth Avenue, and then they extended it over to the east some more. What were the reasons for that, Ken, Cheryl, or?
Yeah, I can probably help there because we're gonna deal with it on our roll call minutes in a little bit. At the last roll call meeting, they sent an order for us to qualify for roll call funding.
What is roll call?
That's the Rochester, Homestead Council of Governments. So, it's made up of township representatives, the small cities representatives, and the county representatives, and the city of Rochester. So, they sent an order for us to ever qualify for getting some of that funding to pay for it. The city would have to annex that road, stretch a road. Even though we might all agree at some point to all chip in, like Mayor started working with Commissioner Flynn on, and your Chairperson, Ken Elke, it's been a long drawn out process. So, we decided, when we started doing this comp plan work, to just bump that out a little bit. So, when we do annex it in, if we all agree to do that, that it can fully be within this orderly annexation territory.
They all visited together with Ken and Kevin and officials. They, they even asked, why don't we bump it out a little bit? I mean, part of it was their suggestion to move it over some.
And, and what it sounds like this will enable us to do is, let's say the adjacent property owners don't wanna come in just yet. It'll allow us to do the section of roadway, just like we did or we're in the process of doing with Tenth Street or Thirty-five, Altai Ninety. Some of those property owners aren't coming in just yet, and we'll wait until they, you know, express that desire. So, it's to help in one category, besides what we feel will be growth someday, or, you know, down in our future, so.
So, you're talking about if you want to blacktop Fifteenth Avenue, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
And we, you know, we've never forced anybody to annex anything on, because they always came to us if they wanted to. So, that's, we're not trying to do a land grab on you guys. So, is there any other concerns or questions from High Forest Board here? If it gets blacktop, I don't know how it'll get pushed by them landlords that have paid power bill, right? If not an annexed end, you wouldn't. You're not gonna pay for none of that. We're trying to make it a joint venture between the county, the city, and the township.
So, indirectly, all of your residents might pay a little bit, just like all city residents would pay a little bit. If we join forces to pay whatever differences, we can't get federal funding for or county funding for or something.
If we never get it done, Wayne, see that it gets turned over to the city, and take care of it, that burden will be off your guys' back. But we need to be able to annex that part in, you know, roadway in. Any questions or concerns up here at the table that you wanna discuss?
I do mind to point out the annexation agreement itself has not changed since, from the original.
The basic language, right.
I mean, the only language that changed are the exhibits that outline those legal descriptions.
We're just moving on a little bit. A little that way.
That's what the discrepancies were, was with the?
Yeah, the map and the legal descriptions did not match. In certain areas.
Any else, guys?
So, Cheryl, I mean, then, I mean, they are off the date completely, I mean?
Yes, yes.
An attorney or whoever looks, looks this all over, I mean, everything looks?
Yes.
I mean, it's?
Yes, as the H put together the map and went through, I made sure that every parcel is included in that legal description.
The legal description was done by a licensed surveyor. Broke it all up. The, the document hasn't changed for the process for annexations at all.
So, even like the last one, like Chi-Hox, is that the last annexation that we've done?
That would've been the last one.
And that, that's in there then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anything else for you guys up here?
Cheryl, you're gonna keep this big map here?
Yes.
So, we're person wants to look at? If these little one, you can't really read that one?
No, we can't, no.
We can always run it down to the fire hall whenever you have a planning commissioner meeting or a board meeting, if you already need it, we'll.
Right, maybe we'll send that.
We'll share it with them.
If you want, if you're still in the second meeting, we can get it to you for that. Because it'll come out in the paper now, so then, then township residents will probably read more and ask some questions if you're still definitely.
Yeah, if they need little one, you can't really read that one.
No, I know.
Well, we've answered most of your concerns. I'm gonna close this joint meeting, the public hearing, and turn to the regular meeting. So, as long as we're gonna send this back, we're not gonna make a motion on this here tonight. We'll wait till you're back from there more.
Yes, after they do it on the second, if it's approved, then we'll bring it back on September thirteenth for you guys to approve.
Okay. So, thank you for your attendance and your attention, guys.
Thank you.
And if you'd like, you can stay the rest of the evening.
You're all nice folks, but no.
Okay, yeah, okay, guys. Our next item tonight will be another public hearing. It's gonna be.
Yep.
An abatement of chickens. In August of twenty-twenty-one, the city received complaints that Andrea Stephens, head of Lane Fifth Avenue Southeast, was raising chickens, ducks, and roosters in her backyard. On August twenty-third, Raiders sent a letter notifying that this was not allowed in Sterfield. So, over the past year and a half, we've sent letters, we've gone through the attorney, we've done the state zoning, we've done everything that we need to do. So, on July twenty-first, Attorney Leth sent a notice of continued violation and notified Stephens of a public hearing on the abatement of the animals scheduled for tonight. So, I will now close the regular meeting and open the public hearing about the abatement of the chickens, ducks, and geese. There's the letter in there, folks, let's see, we gotta. Don't notice it. Meeting to read here, Cheryl?
No, there isn't. He just told me that.
Alright, meeting's open, guys. We've done everything we can possibly do. We've sent all the letters. We've even had the Homestead County Sheriff up there at least once, seven weeks ago, twice.
Twice.
Things are being ignored, things are still going as they were. We're gonna have to, I guess, go in physically remove, correct?
So, what the process would be is, if you make the decision to do the abatement, our attorney, Melanie Leth, will send one more letter notifying that August thirtieth will be the date that we will be coming in and confiscating.
If you.
Then maybe somebody here too, speak to that?
She's running for, she's running for county.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know any bucks I could sue.
Pay attention, you want more?
Go across your desk.
Oh, what am I gonna say? Gosh. You guys have anything to say about it?
What do we get to do?
What's that?
Who do we get to do this?
City staff, Sean, Sean and Bill.
Our public works department will be doing that.
I thought the guy's running for reelection, weren't you? Oh, I was gonna ask you, Cheryl, did you hear anything, any written or oral?
No, nope, nothing, I remember. So, the first, the first ticket that she was issued, Debbie Owens did make contact with her, and he delivered it. And at that time, she did say that there was someone that she could take the chickens. But this last ticket now was mailed to her because he couldn't catch her at home. And we haven't, she hasn't responded to any of the letters other than that very first one, when she came back with her letter from her therapist, counselor. It said it was an emotional support chickens, ducks, and geese.
Any other questions, anything to add? Otherwise, we're gonna close the meeting, we're gonna make a motion here.
You might just wanna add, because of that letter, we have the city attorney look into that, and those animals don't qualify under the state guidelines for that kind of support animal.
Correct. In the last year and a half, we've done, we've taken every step that legally need to be taken. And we've gotten a response, so this is why we're at the point we're at. Because she's violating the zoning ordinance. Unless you wanna allow zoning ordinance, is why we leave all of the town we need to put a stop to. So, if there's no other discussion, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Alright, council action requested would be to order the abatement removal of the animals on August thirtieth, with one last letter to be sent by Attorney Leth notifying Stephens of this action. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do you have any final questions or discussion?
Mary and Dog gonna be labeled a chicken hater. You know what, I think, so clearly.
See the low case. Alright, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Melanie sent a letter. That takes us to the next item, is Florence Park, Billings Land Transfer. The park board is recommending that the red outlined parcel be deeded over to B. Billings, four oh nine Second Street Northwest. This recommendation comes at the request of Billings to square up per property line to match the others to right east. You may remember that this same scenario took place, and some of you should remember that, at Meadow Park South in two thousand and eighteen. Billings will be responsible for the survey and legal fees for lot split and preparation of deed if approved. Now, you all see what we're talking about there. Questions, discussion on that? Brent, you have any questions?
No, I discussed it before our meeting.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions they'd like to ask or have answered? Hearing done, I'm looking for a motion to approve land transactions recommended.
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, approval of Emma Manley page position. Did they get that right, Nate?
You did?
Good. By the end of August, we will be losing both our library pages. We've received a number of quality applications and conducted phone and in-person interviews with a number of the candidates. While some travel prevented us being with additional finalists, I would like to offer one of our vacancies to Emma Manley. Emma interviewed extraordinarily well, and will make an excellent addition to our team. Emma is also a junior at Sterfield High. We hope to have her on staff until she starts college. We also hope to finish interviewing page candidates next week and have another library page to bring before the council by the end of August. But we hope to get Emma on board and trained before our current pages leave the library. Which is excellent, thank you. Council action requested would be to either approve or deny Emma Manley to be hired for the position of library page. Questions, discussion? Library board member.
Yes, sir.
Who's that?
Great candidate.
Great candidate, alright. Any other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Nate?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, that takes us on to that, to the Mayor's Staff Consultment Report. It's the Mayor's Report tonight. City of Sterfield would like to send their sympathies to the families of Vic Fritz, Rhonda Steinkamp, Stephen Breeze, Ronald Anderson, and Donald Jewell. But also, he's probably not there right now, but today was Buck Breezy's birthday. So, tomorrow, when you see him sitting out there again, right up here on thirty, give him a honk and a hands up. He, he really appreciates it. He's out there every day welcoming people to and from our community. Let's not forget to support the American Legion by golfing in their tournament on August thirteenth. Save this date. Elvis will be in the building. Brad Boyce is gonna be in concert at the United Methodist Church on Sunday, August twenty-first. If you haven't ever seen one of his, it's, it's well worth it. He's, he, he's Elvis, when he's not doing street work. Use your organization, organizational skills and get ready for the Fall Trash and Treasure Days. They're coming right up, September seventeenth and sixteenth. It's kinda scary to think, that ain't that far off. Wow. And don't forget, it's that time of year again to start looking forward to the Morning's Lions Annual Fall Fest, which is also September seventeenth. Always a good time, a lot of people out there supporting them out there. That's all I've got for tonight. That'll take us to City Administrator's Report. You up?
Sure, report, that's in your packet. And the main items, you're addressed a little bit earlier this evening and then tonight, so thank you for that. That's it?
That's it?
Yeah, I'll comment a little more when we get to roll kind of.
This is on Google. You sure that's it?
Yeah, you, you've been talking on the items, I ended it, so that was good. Good participation from all of you.
City Finance Director Carla, you got a report?
Um, just continuing to work on the preliminary budget. And if you guys have any other information for me or wants or needs that you would like added, we do have the budget workshop for the next council meeting in two weeks.
And what time does that start?
Five thirty.
Five thirty? At City Hall?
At City Hall.
Any other questions for Finance Director Carla? Alright, hearing done, let's move on to Public Works Director, Sean.
Before it in there, we are getting to the time of year. We're gonna start losing some of our help at the end of this week. We lose some of our guys to go to college. And we're starting doing some projects with the, putting in the new playground equipment out of Shoe and Park, and then doing some trails we're gonna be cutting in. So, we may have to juggle guys a little bit between moment to fill in for some of those guys that were doing that stuff, the slow stuff now, but normal stuff that happens every year. Other than that, we're leaving children alone.
Any questions for Sean?
We got the Jacobson mower back, I see.
Yep. Your new mower's a happy car.
And I was, looked at the George, Bill and I looked at the pond up there. It is, it is cleaning up pretty nicely up there. Of course, every time we get fortunate rain, it should wash over the house.
They said it was totally spotless this morning.
Ah?
They said it was totally spotless this morning.
I bet it was. Alright, any other questions for Sean? Hearing done, thanks, thank all the guys. Thanks to guys that are leaving early or take off for college and stuff, let them know, thank you. Page designer, city engineer, Jenna, do you have a report for us?
Likely, construction will start next week.
Over here?
Yep, but I do have to discuss this with Alcor, make sure we're still on schedule there. Otherwise, at our next council meeting, we'll be reviewing and approving plans and specs for the Twenty-three North project, so that we can submit those to Mina and the recorder and everything, so.
Any other questions for Jenna, while we're out here? Alright, thank you, Jenna. That takes us on to Library Director Nate, you're up.
Sorry, I don't have a report. This is like a, this is like a bonus show up. This isn't my normal meeting, so I just went here to make sure. I'm in two weeks, um.
That would be a compliment that we want you back every week, so.
It's great, um, I have.
You're doing a great job, and you're very entertaining.
Um, maybe half a month in a week, yeah.
What's the magic tricks that you got when you're reporting, you get all the magic tricks?
Yeah, I, um, what do I have? I, are, the main thing I would say is our book sale's gonna be next, next week, Thursday and Friday. Thursday is when the gelato truck's gonna be there, so, you know, fancy ice cream, and, um, a lot of adult fiction, so, um, should be pretty good. And thank you for approving Emma, I think she's gonna be really great.
Good.
And I only have one, um, uh, dinosaur versus robot chess set left, so, you know.
And for free.
Well, I would want to say, you know, race the city conference, or race the library.
Alright, any questions for our library director? Thank you, Nate. No Fire Chief, no Pool Director. That takes us to Committee Creation Board Reports, Chamber of Commerce. No E D A H R A.
Meeting next week.
Next week. Finance?
We have a meeting.
Before the next week.
Before our next meeting.
Library?
We have a meeting next week. Park Board, we met last week out at the new park space in Shippensburg, Rolling Ridge. Talking about budget and look at where the playground equipment's gonna go out there and stuff, so.
Get that all kinda figured out?
I think so.
Good. Is that it?
That's all I got.
Personnel?
There's, yeah, they're just underneath my thing with the minutes.
Will let me go on that one this time, though. Been busy couple weeks, I realize. Planning zoning?
Uh, we met earlier, just going over that comprehensive plan.
Yep. Yep, we had the comprehensive plan, preliminary meeting night was a good meeting. Public safety, you're up, you got anything to tell us?
Yeah, I don't have anything real significant, but I wanted to follow up with everyone about the speed signs that I talked about.
Did they send us the places?
What's that?
Did the staff send some of the information on?
And thank you for that, I got those. I think we're gonna start with Sixth Street Southeast beginning next week. Currently, the two signs, the trailers, one is on that new section, County Road Four, up there in Homestead Township.
Yep. I think I would sweep by it, I got that.
They like that same road. I don't know where the other one is, I can't remember. Dean Thompson, one of our deputies, is kind of our in-office expert with those trailers, so I'm trying to learn how to run them, so that if he's gone, I can still operate them. He had already had a plan that with school, start of school approaching, he was gonna start putting those out in the smaller towns, kinda get people aware of their speed as school approaches. They didn't have Sturco in that rotation, so I think the one from County Road Four was supposed to go to Yoda, but I negotiated with him to get it here first. So, we're gonna put, we're gonna start with Sixth Street Southeast by Bonner, so you'll probably see it out there, so maybe there's something on Monday, starting. And then, I'm gonna put pressure on the M and J's to be sure that as that, as those trailers get rotated through the different communities, our different areas where it's been requested, that Sturco is a significant part of that, so you shouldn't have seen it down here. Out of the two signs, probably most of the summer, or fall, so.
Good, thank you.
I'll make sure it's down here frequently, at least one.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, Sean? Any questions, Will? Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Public Works? I guess that's, Sean, I'm going back, I should've asked you back on yours. What, what's the, are they ever gonna start blacktopping up at the school, or they just? I mean, they had it tore out.
School ran into an issue, so it's, the school. They're, when they got it tore off, their base, it didn't, they had the base. So, they're, had to go through their steps to get approved, so it's held up a little bit. But, you know, they said it'd be three weeks original, but stuff changes.
I was just wondering, because like it's, like you said, it's been kind of a standstill, there's one.
Our stuff is basically ready to go.
Yeah.
The water's taken care of.
I had a couple calls, questions about, you want to be out here? Was this one or one?
And they have access, I mean, they can.
No, no, they have access, yeah.
I haven't worried about it too much because they are able to, they're granted.
Alright, thank you. Ready?
A report?
Roll call.
Minutes in your packet. Provided, the most recent policy change language, where they've added proposed language that I felt more specifies us and Byron to be eligible for some of that funding. Obviously, as Jenna pointed out, we'll work on becoming a part of a couple of those supplementary there to keep that voice heard, and now, the work on renewed effort about Fifteenth, since it does qualify under those categories. And it still might involve joint participation from us, High Forest, and the county. We'll take another staff editor and try to work toward it. Because at the last meeting, I told them, between us townships and, and smaller cities, we're hardly getting anything. Rochester gets the most concentration because of volume and numbers. But I said, for our communities, it's just important for our citizens, so periodically, they've gotta do that out just a little bit better for both our smaller entities, so. We'll see if this helps. One of the things they did bring up, I didn't mean to cut you off there. Uh, one of the things they brought up was, because we told about Fifteenth being in both jurisdictions. And they said it has to fall under these population numbers, which Sturco qualifies for, but High Forest doesn't. Thus, the explanation on annexing that whole section of street and roadway. So, we'll have to work on that.
I see you reading through there, we did get mentioned three times, and Rochester only got mentioned fifteen. So, at least they're mentioning us again. So, good work, though.
We'll work on that together.
Transit Advisory Committee? No report or ticket, communications, nothing in our packets? That brings us to the open mic. The city council welcomes and encourages. The City Council welcomes and encourages participants from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employee's name may be used, please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to about four minutes, speakers be recognized only once. At this time, we ask anyone who would like to address the council, please step up to our podium and give us your name and address, what you're gonna do for us when you get elected.
It's exciting to, um, be back in a small town, I grew up in a small town.
That brings us to our final motion of the evening, whoops, Bill's got his hand up.
Yep, just to thank you, all our neighborhoods that had the night out picays, uh, they went really well, it was a beautiful night, a little warm on the toasty side, Jeremiah joined us and his daughter.
Jeremiah and his daughter, so.
Just to see all the neighborhoods getting along and having a good time and camaraderie is great, all over the whole geography of Sterfield.
Couple of big parties.
Yeah.
Alright, that'll bring us to our final motion. Move to your turn, please. Through the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you're adjourned.